All right, call the meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're doing kind of an informal just study work session tonight. And I just want to give a couple of goals, at least from the staff's perspective for the council. One, in an effort just to communicate better, tonight's probably the first in a series of work sessions that we may do in place of a regularly scheduled meeting or like we've been doing during the day at lunchtime. The goal here is just to provide you information, A, that prompts more questions, B, informs, or equips you to answer questions you're getting from your ward or from the citizens out there. So tonight, we're going to go through GIS, mapping, Permatron, all the things, tools that we utilize to do business on the development side of the world. Certainly, there are other departments using GIS, but it helps give an insight on where you can go and get information if you're from the outside looking in, and plus also how we utilize it. And then Garrett is going to give a project update in a very high-level, kind of brief of all the projects. We'll try not to make that take too long, but there's a lot of information there. So if you have a question, stop him in the middle of it and just ask. The next one, the next thing, the next meeting or work session that we do, I've got a little bit of information regarding growth, development on the residential side. I'll share that. I'll share us in comparison to some of our neighboring communities, where we're similar and where we're different. But yeah, just an effort to provide information.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council, for letting us present this information to you guys. We don't get a lot of opportunities to talk about GIS. And when we do, it's exciting. So we've been working to try and show off a little bit what it is. And the work session item was, first off, my name is Josh Jones. I'm the GIS manager, for reference. So I manage all the stuff we'll look at here today and what we do with it. The work session was titled "Permatron Training." And Permatron is a GIS. It's something, it's a term we coined for GIS and how we ended up developing and using it in-house. But what we're going to focus on in this presentation is what GIS is, what we use it for as a city, and then kind of highlight how it is this visual communicator. I have that title there. There's some lingo with it, just like there is with any industry. So if you guys hear stuff that doesn't make sense, or maybe that's just because it's me talking, just interrupt me and ask for clarification, because I really want you guys to understand what it is. That would make it worthwhile. So please jump in and have me explain better if I say something that doesn't make sense. We're not going to be able to cover everything that GIS does, so we're going to try to hit the high points of what we're using it for. I wish we could hit every detail, because it's all exciting, but we're going to try to keep things moving and get through to the end without taking up too much time. If there is anything that we don't cover or sparks thoughts and questions that we can't get to today, I would love it if you'd follow up with us and we can have a further conversation or even meet in the office and we can look at some things hands-on and get a better understanding. That'll start us off with the primary question, which is, what is GIS? That's a question I hear a lot, and it's probably the hardest part of my job is answering that question. It sounds funny, because I do it 40 days a week. You'd think I'd be pretty good at it. But GIS is so expansive, it's so big, there's not really a single answer that could encapsulate what it does. It can be, it's ubiquitous, it can be applied to every field, and it can be used in a lot of different ways, and you'll see that here today. But that's why it's hard to answer. And we will start by looking at the acronym to at least get a general sense of what it means. That is Geographic Information System. Geographic being we're looking at something that has a location related to it. And information being it's data. It's whether it's text, or a number, or a date. And a system, last word there, it's being used in relation to a location. So all of those things combined, that's a GIS. And that makes sense, but it also doesn't, it's not very specific. It doesn't give you a specific idea of what GIS is. So we'll look closer at that here in just a minute. But for a definition's sake, we went ahead and put together a brief example of what GIS might be to us. This isn't, this is one of a million definitions. We're going to look at it in this presentation as a digital representation of the real world. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to take what's in Republic and put it on our computer, so we can quantify it, we can learn about it, and we can share it with others, so they know what they're managing. And that's the goal, GIS. So that is that digital representation. That would include things like physical items, the things in Republic that take up space, a street sign, or a street itself, or a fire hydrant, a building, or a tree even, really, literally anything that can be captured and managed and quantified and measured into GIS. Additionally, more conceptual things like geographies, boundaries, like city limits. When you drive into Republic, you do see a city limit sign, but you don't see a big orange line like you'd see on a map. That'd be cool, but that's what GIS helps with. It helps you understand those edges. Zoning, that's, you know, you're not really going to see zoning anywhere else besides the GIS. And ideas like that go on forever, school districts and earlier. But that's not it. There's another type of information you get in GIS, and that's records and tables and things that are information we share all the time, but you can't visualize typically. That would be something like a permit. You know, you don't see a permit in the real world. It might be a paper and a file traditionally, but in GIS, you can see it. And our users are now seeing permits instead of just having them in a file somewhere, or a utility damage report. We're doing, our locators are going out into the field when they're locating utilities, or they're responding to damages lines hit. They're now like capturing where that damage was happening, who did it, what the extent of the damage was. And so now, over time, we're seeing a record of an event that was occurred, that we can now see where trouble areas are, maybe something that needs more attention. So it kind of adds more insight. And that's ultimately that digital representation, and that's why we chose that definition. But the goal of this presentation was to be a little more visual. So far, we've just talked, but the rest of it will be primarily visuals that will show you what it looks like. It makes it a little bit easier to understand. And we'll start with examples of what we're actually doing in the city to use GIS. This first one looks at quantifying our assets. And that is a primary and fundamental tool that GIS offers. Traditionally, GIS is brought to municipality for the purpose of managing your infrastructure, wet water, wastewater, stormwater. You want to know how much you have, or how old it is, or what kind it is. This visual you're looking at there is just showing the installation of waterline. That is actually at Old Savannah, I think. So it's a pretty new subdivision there. That's a virtual GIS environment, but it's just showing you how you can quantify the installation of the waterline as it's put in, in a GIS. And that's what we do. We have our staff inspecting the infrastructure as they would to permit it or to allow that to take place. And as that's done, they will capture it in our GIS. And then we have that information to plan further. An example of that is when they're doing a review of an adjacent subdivision, you know, they need to know what infrastructures around it, so they know how costly or how difficult it'll be to expand through this new development area. And you need to know quickly what's available. Oh, GIS offers that as well. So that's just one of many ways we're looking at waterline, but that's just one example. We use it for everything. We talked about permitting already, we're talking about inspections. And it looks like the question. But there's endless possibilities, and I feel like we get excited about it, because we're trying to grow it into other areas where it's providing helpful insights.
Josh, I'm going to jump in. And I think some of the council will remember back when we started master planning water and sewer, one of the first things we had to do, we didn't even know where all the manholes in the city were. So what this tool allows us to do now is our inspectors are in the field. As that manhole or that waterline's being installed, they can collect a survey shot, more or less. It populates in the map, in the virtual world, with all of that information there. So it happens real-time. So we'll never be in that situation where we've got to go spend $200,000 just to go find all of our assets, assign elevations to, and understand where it's at. It's going to be, the endeavor was getting everything in there. Now, keeping it up-to-date is what we're able to do.
Thank you for adding that, because that is a big piece of what it is. All right, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next example of what we're using it for. This is a more general and basic example. This visual just shows you where parks are in the city. That seems simple, but when you're sharing location with others, it helps to see it visually. If somebody in a Republic came up to you and asked about, "Where are the parks in Republic? How many you got?" Sure, you can name them, you can list them off, you can say they're on what roads. But if you can give them a visual, they can quickly get an understanding of where parks are related to one another, their sizes, even without counting them. You get a general idea of how many parks there are there. And you can see the dispersion across the city, you know how dense parks are in Republic. So that is just that competitive edge GIS offers when you're communicating with somebody about what you have. And that, again, applies to everything. This is a parks visual, but anything we have can be shared that same way. Another thing it offers is a time component. It's data with that fourth dimension, it's time. This visual is looking at the city Republic and its growth by decade since 1940. These are annexations that occurred in those decades, and you can get a sense of how fast it grew and what decades, and just see the footprint change in the last 80 years. And that's, again, easier to understand visually than it is when somebody's just up here telling you the numbers of, or just to tell you the square miles over decades. It would sound interesting, but it looks cooler. So it's definitely something worth sharing. This is just one example. Everything we do in GIS has a time component stamped to it, so we could be showing this with any infrastructure item we have, or with permits, or inspections, or damage reports, or anything we've done so far. So again, a reason we're trying to grow its use, so that in 20, 30 years, we can look at every piece of information the city manages as a whole like this, and we can share that insights for the future managers of the city. And the last visual I'll share for you here is one of my favorite pieces of GIS. It's kind of a new frontier and exciting one for me, is we use drones. We're integrating that into data. What you just saw there was a real video of a drone transformed into the virtual scan. It's a 3D scan that the drone does and gives us this 3D environment that we put in our computers. And we can measure things. We can actually get 3D measurements like height and volumes. And that's a new area we're seeing benefits from. You're getting better understanding of the terrain. So if you're ever planning any kind of construction work that needs to understand drainage problems or detention needs, so that you're not flooding your neighbor, this can, we can use a drone to go out there and learn about the environment in 3D and get that information. It's more of an engineer-focused application, but it is a new tool that we're taking advantage of. You know, the drone's nice, because you get pretty pictures and videos, but it's also providing this benefit that we're using. And additionally, you guys have seen the maps and how they have a straight-down arrow look at the whole city. We're using it to update the spots that are being constructed with these new projects, so that when you look at it, it's not outdated. As you guys know, Republic's changing a lot fast, so we're frequently updating these places in Republic to make sure the maps that the staff is using is reflecting the footprint of the environment today. And that's the last bit for me, so I'll finish it off.
I'm Chris Taber. I'm the principal planner. So that's kind of shown us a little bit about some of the cooler things we can do visually with GIS, but not exactly how staff is necessarily using it in day-to-day work. We've actually integrated this into many of our processes that we do all the time. In a robust GIS system, what it allows us to do is it tells us what is happening, where and when that happened, and also allows us to measure those events in meaningful ways. So a robust system can be used to paint a more vibrant picture of the city. And I'm going to quickly show you how we're currently using GIS through the lifecycle of a fictionalized residential subdivision project. I want to stress that this is a fictionalized project. It exists on a real area of the city, but the project itself was fictionalized for the purposes of showing all the processes that we might do with the data. So we would start with the site itself. We have a developer, they come in and they request a pre-application meeting. We use GIS to conduct a generalized review of the property. We offer the developer information about the availability of utilities, and then we offer them information about environmental constraints on the property, such as sinkholes or floodplains that are present, to try to give them an idea of the challenges that they're going to meet in developing that property. That's before anyone's ever paid us to do anything. We offer that for free, but we, you know, we rely heavily on GIS to do that. The system is also how we track the city limits. So annexations are often, or can be a part of a developing project. We've got to bring something into the city limits that is not currently part of that. The GIS file that shows you the city limits on the map is actually like what we use to track the city limits. So when we get an annexation in, after it's been brought into the city and everyone's, and it's signed by the mayor, we change those limits, the city limits, in the GIS and alter that, so that you see it differently in the map. We also send that data to the county, so that they can use it for property tax information, and to the Census Bureau, so that they can use it later in tracking population for the area. So tracking annexations over time also is what made it possible to create that earlier animation that we saw, which was in, you know, all of the city's growth since its inception. The GIS system is also one of the primary tools that we use when we receive an application for rezoning. Prospective changes in land use are evaluated against the utilities that the city has in the area. If we recommend approval for a land use change, we want to make sure that there's not only availability of water and sewer, but also that the infrastructure there has the capacity and ability to serve that site for the highest or densest land use that would show up there. So we can look at, we can use this GIS layer, and we can look at not only where those mains are, kind of like you saw earlier, but we'll dig in there and we'll see how big are those mains, what's the flow at a hydrant, to provide more information far before we even allow, before staff even approves the rezone. We also use GIS to quickly compare adjacent land uses, so we can evaluate like the appropriateness between different zoning districts on a rezone case. When these annexed properties come in, they bring their zoning from the county with it. So the zoning data in our GIS is a visualization of the city's zoning map. When the city first enacted the zoning ordinance, they assigned zoning districts to, you know, most of the properties in the city, and that became the city's official zoning map. After that point, we've been amending that zoning map. When we make an amendment to that map, the representation, the way that we see it, the only way to really look at that is by using our GIS system. So the previous system, you know, this is an improvement on the previous system, which is like a bunch of people in a room with crayons on a piece of paper. So we can look at some of those maps sometimes, and they're kind of interesting, but they're much harder to tell what was going on there. So after that new zoning is assigned, the city receives an application for preliminary platting in the case of a residential subdivision. GIS helps us conduct the reviews for items such as the street and sidewalk continuations that are necessary for that subdivision, as well as likely connection points for infrastructure. We also use the GIS in determining the best way of addressing those lots in relation to the other city properties and other addresses in that area. If the preliminary plat is accepted, then the developer may move directly into the infrastructure permitting phase. So the city receives a permit application and detailed plans showing exactly where they plan to put the infrastructure, as well as the depth and, you know, specifically what's going in the ground. And that's prior to, you know, we review that to make sure that that's exactly what we want before it's ever accepted in the city. As the infrastructure's actually built, staff is out there in the real world siding these pieces, as Andrew said, and putting them in our system a piece at a time. So we're building these layers as things are built in the real world. At the same time, they're putting in information as to the materials that we use to make those pipes, the size of those pipes, all sorts of information that, you know, doesn't mean anything to me, it may not mean anything to any of you, but is like very, very helpful when a particular person has to do their job. It's ultimately tracking the assets throughout our system. So testing of infrastructure is also done straight from the GIS system. Operating in the field, staff is going to use a tablet to conduct inspections just by clicking on the relevant piece of infrastructure, the pipe, the main, the manhole, whatever it is, and then filling out a pop-up form on the tablet that accounts for that inspection. The results of the inspections are then, inspections are easily accessible to people like myself for review, so we can see, you know, what has been finished in that area or what's still ongoing. We also use the inspection data that comes in, and we can track statistics off it, so we can find out things like the amount of main that have been tested in a specific or a given period of time. Once all the infrastructure's constructed and then approved by the city, the city receives an application for final platting, and the final plat acts to actually create those new lots and dedicate all those public infrastructure pieces. Once that's recorded, then lots can be permitted for new building permits. So we will receive at our front desk or by email a permit application to construct the house, and then we enter that information into the city's system directly through our GIS, through the map in particular. We include all the relevant information in that entry, things like the valuation of the house, if they offer that, the square footage, the number of bedrooms, the applicant's contact information, obviously. And then the workflow for permitting is actually cataloged in the GIS system itself. So we conduct the review. Obviously, someone's evaluating those materials, but we track at the points at which that's been reviewed, that review is finished, when we issue it, when it's picked up. All that stuff is recorded in the GIS system. And again, we can track metrics related to that, such as like average review times, or how many permits that we have outstanding that somebody's picked up. We can also keep track of when applications or permits are going to expire, so we can remove them kind of from our file system in a more easy way. And then after permits are issued and construction's begun, the GIS system is also used to track the building inspections. Again, with tablets in the field, inspectors, they go out there, they use the map, they select from a pop-up that they're doing an inspection by clicking on a permit, and then much of the relevant information is pulled directly from the permit, such as the address, the permit that the inspection's related to, all the information that we can pull, we do. And then they go ahead and do their inspection in a pop-up form. So once completed, staff members can easily view the results of any particular inspection. So if someone calls and asks for the results, we don't have to dig up the inspection or call that inspector, who's likely still out in the field inspecting. We can just, you know, check on that permit itself and see what the last inspection was, passed or failed, you know, what it's approved to do next. Once all of the required inspections have been passed, then the project is considered complete. And this process will play out for each of the lots on a subdivision. Smaller projects, obviously, such as fences and accessory structures, are also going through the same process. And all of this data lives in our system and is data that the city owns and controls. So we don't, nobody's gatekeeping this data for us. It's data that we can access anytime. If we decide to do something else with it, you know, it's data that we can pull out and do that with. So we've kind of gone over what GIS is and why it's important, and we've also talked about how city staff utilizes the GIS system. Quickly, we'd like to go over a few of the tools that we've made available for you and the public, and briefly show you how to use those. So if you look at the PDF that you guys have in front of you, there's a link at the top, and we will make this digitally available by email tomorrow. So the link at the top is, will take you directly to our map contents page. And then there's a few, there's a few products on there that we'll go through. There's the Builds Project Tracker, the Community Map, the Permit Dashboard, and then a zoning district lookup tool. So we'll start with the Builds Project Tracker map. You guys might be familiar with this one. We get a lot of questions about this one, a lot of interest in this one. So if you, and again, you can use these links that are here to get there. There's a lot of ways to get to this stuff. So in the Builds Project Tracker map, what we're showing is all of the projects that we've got in some phase of review or being constructed, and then as well as many of the completed or completed subdivision or commercial projects. So we've got in-progress subdivisions. If you click on one of these, what you get is the plat, and then it's going to show you a lot of the related information in narrative form. So it kind of tells you what the land use is. This is a PDD, for instance. So this one's going to tell you, you know, the specific zoning for each of the lots and how big those lots are. It's going to give you, you know, how many units can be built on a given acre in the density. It's also, we generally try and provide an up-to-date status for these. So the last, the last status that's happened for this is that it was approved on May 4th of actually last year as a PDD. And then infrastructure planning is currently underway, and that's still actually the status that it's in. So we have, you know, this for all of our ongoing projects. If something really goes on hold, we try and take it on, off there, but it can be often difficult to figure out if something's on hold or just temporary out of play. So we also have the same thing going for commercial projects. You can see, for instance, if you want to click on the iron gray one, so it'll give you the location of that through the map, and then it'll also give you, you know, the address, which we've usually assigned in these cases, what the project is, and a brief description of the project, and then the status for the project as well. Once that has been built out and that has gone, you know, that building is occupied, we'll move that over to the completed commercial stuff. And so we try and keep this one just for the things that are ongoing. So we try and update this really regularly, because there are a lot of people looking at that. So we also put the last time we've updated it there at the top. Let's go ahead and look at, if you don't mind, let's look at the Community Map real quick. So this is another one you're likely familiar with. It is our main map for the public. The city has access to several different layers on this map. If you look at the bottom left, there's a list, a layer list right there, and that's how you look at kind of the table of contents for the map. So there's a lot of things that come on by default, but there are things that are not available until you go into this and click on them, such as the zoning in districts. And this is how you can check the zoning for any given property. If you drop down that arrow next to it, it'll actually provide you with, on the zoning. If you, yeah. If you drop down that, it'll actually give you the legend for this that's up. So some of these things are kind of deep in there, and we've got a lot of stuff in there. So you may have to dig around, but you'll find something probably you didn't know that existed in there. We provide the information for zoning, we provide information for subdivisions. You can actually get the plat for your subdivision from here. So when something is final-platted, we put the subdivision up here and make the actual plat available to people, so they don't have to go to the county and get that. Yeah, so it's real simple. You just turn it on, click on the subdivision, and then it provides you with the link. We also have, you know, the natural features for the area, and if you click on that, what you'll get is like sinkholes, floodplains, things that you may not even know are on a particular property unless you have access to kind of this data. So these floodplains are, the floodplains that FEMA has told us are there, you know, so they're something that is very important to know if you have one on your property. And sinkholes are obviously important for their own reason. But this map is regularly used all the time. You can, you know, you can even use it. You can search it and click on, you know, type in an address and go straight there.
Would you mind to go to my house? Just out of curiosity. No sinkhole? All right, never mind. We're good.
So we can go to, we can go to any different parcel on this also, and you can get information about the owner of the parcel, the address of the owner even, and then also sometimes the year the house was built. And then we at the bottom put a league, put the assessor's information as a link, and so this will take you straight to the assessor's page for their property card for your property, whatever you're looking for. All right, Josh, if you don't mind, can you take us to the, sure. So this is the Permit Dashboard. On this dashboard, what we're doing is we're tracking all of the permits for commercial, residential, signs, demolitions, changes of occupancy for businesses. We're doing all that that we've got in the system so far. Now, we've only been doing this since like, most of this started in 2020 for real, so we do have some earlier stuff in there, but you're not going to see full built-out years for 19 and 18. So what this allows you to do, and there's a lot going on here, so I'll try and cover it real quick. So there's a map showing you where all these permits are. Then there's a bar graph up at the top that's breaking them down by five categories. So you can see the number of commercial, the number of residential, sign, change of occupancy, and demolition. On the left of that, there's a line graph that's going to show you the amount of all those permits. Then there is a pie chart that's showing you the status of those permits, and then a list at the bottom of about the top, the most recent 100 permits and what you're doing. So you can filter all this data, and you can filter it in a number of ways. You can filter it by the permit year up at the top. You can choose just the things in 2023. Everything gets filtered there. You can click on any one of those on the map, and it'll bring up direct information about the permit. So you can see, you know, the direct information there. All of these things will filter as you make selections, so that's another thing to keep in mind, is you can kind of lock yourself out of stuff if you're not paying attention. But you click on or click again on something to get the filter on or off. So you can click on just residential, and now you're looking at the residential permits for 2023. Now you can go up to the permit type, and you could click New, and you could look at just the new houses for 2023. So if we look up there, we can see that we've got it in the selection bar. It says 115. That's how many of those that we've permitted so far this year, which is more than usual. And then again, on that list, it's going to list the top 100 or so of those and give you, you know, direct information. give you, you know, direct information to them. So if you click on any one of those, it should also, I think it'll filter that map, won't it, Josh? Okay. So it'll show you directly where that one that you're interested is. So there's a lot of ways to look at a lot of data on this, and we're happy to go more into it with anyone, if anyone's really interested in that, you know, and come and, come to our office or whatever, we'll meet you somewhere. We can look at that, and I can show you how to use it. It's, it's pretty simple, but there's a lot going on there. And if you haven't ever used something like this before, then you might not be super familiar with it. And then the last one that we want to show you is a Zoning District lookup map. And this is something you've almost certainly not seen. It's a newer thing that we've made. I get a lot of phone calls about what is my zoning and what can I do there? So this is one that we made specifically to look up, so someone can go in there, they can type the address of interest, and then that's not going to be a go. Just click on something, just click on one of the properties. You can type in an address for any given property, and then, some of the city's buildings don't have zoning assignments, that's why. So if you click on any of these zonings, what it's going to bring up is a narrative about the zoning. It gives you the purpose of that zoning district, and then also the uses that are available with that, within that. So here we're looking at C1. So it shows you kind of a brief list of the uses there, and then it gives you a direct link to the municipal code, which is going to take you straight to the C1 section of that code, so you can look at the code in its entirety. This was just something that we built to hopefully help us field less of these calls and, you know, save staff time. But this is, you know, something that, this, of all the phone calls that we get, I bet 10% of them are just zoning-related calls.
Who made this program?
Josh and I built this application using ESRI licenses that we pay for, and they give us access to be able to do this.
The correct answer is they built it.
They built it. Sorry, I didn't use the right word.
Well, I want to be real clear. I can't sell this to you. I want to be real clear.
I'm not looking to buy it, I've already got it. So you guys did all this?
Yeah, we did all the stuff that you saw, all the processes that you saw. A lot of them are joint operations. Josh's job is managing this and creating this. So sometimes it's gotten, it's gotten mostly to the point where what I, what Josh and I do is I will tell him what we would like, and then Josh does the real work, which is a good position for me to be in.
Josh, do you like doing this?
Yeah, I do. I'm very pleased with my position.
So a couple of things that I, I have to like, bring it back to like dummy version.
Thank you.
So the important things to note, this didn't exist five years ago. It didn't even really exist three years ago. It's kind of been a work in progress. Josh came on shortly after I think I started here to tackle, I didn't, I'm not sure, I knew what GIS was, I didn't know what we were going to do with it. And a lot of the ideas came through Chris and Josh, just solving problems. So one of those problems for us might be the way we used to issue building permits. If I could describe that to you, we had an inspector with a stack of manila folders on his desk about this tall, and if I wanted to go to a certain house, and I'd have to file through 10 inspection records to see how, how many times it's inspected, where it was on the inspection, had it passed or failed, did we issue occupancy. It took an amount of time that, of either myself or someone else looking for it, that we probably couldn't even quantify. But now, I mean, you see how easy it is. We could literally tell the system, hey, I, I want to know every footing inspection that was done in the last 30 days, and about that fast, it'll produce that information for me. So a lot of times when we get inquiries from developers, media, even from the council, the way we're able to tell you information so fast is through the tools that are provided here. So sizes of mains, the normal, the way I would do that is I would send somebody out there and be like, hey, pop a valve and tell me how big that pipe is. Here it lives, and we've, we've built and verified that data over time.
I'm glad you said verified, because my question is, we do have a lot of data in this. Are you finding that the data is correct as it's cross-referenced? Are there mistakes? How have you guys been cutting down on those mistakes?
So we've got, one of the things that we do along with the inspect, in, in the inspections of these various pieces of infrastructure, is they actually go out and there's an effort to field verify all of this stuff. So we are checking over this GIS data, which a lot of it existed before any of us got here. And so we are constantly making sure that things are field verified, not only that the information of materials and sizes and whatever is correct, but also the location. So the ability to actually put things in their real place has improved since some of this stuff was made. So we are finding that that is usually the piece that's wrong most of the time. It needs to be moved over a little bit north, or it's, you know, it's actually on this person's property. And so that's a change that we find a lot. And we're doing that, that's an effort that takes time, but it's an effort that, again, by using it this way, we can quantify how much of it we field verified versus how much we haven't.
I want each of you to answer this question, but from your own perspective and your own jobs. So how does this help normal, everyday citizens from your point of view? The citizens of Republic, how does this help? Chris, go first.
I would say that this provides an enormous amount of transparency. So there's a lot of things that, you know, a lot of what we do is public, and a lot of that is gate-kept simply behind the lack of time for us to be able to provide that. If we just put some of this stuff in our system, the things that are appropriate to share on a regular basis, we can just make that stuff available to people. It makes it, it makes them, the people looking for it, people coming to do business here, it makes their lives easier, it makes it more likely for them to succeed in what they're doing, and it saves staff time and allows us to do, you know, real work.
Sum up what you said. I'd say just give better answers faster.
What do you think, Andrew?
From my perspective, we, we save staff. That, back to that permit number for 2023, we've issued 115 permits, and I have less building inspectors than I did in 2016 right now. The only way we get that done is through people that care and hard work, but also by being efficient. To me, that's, that's the value, all of it. I mean, from record-keeping, it's, I couldn't tell you how much staff time it's saving just in that vein. On the development side, you know, I'm a pretty good salesman, but when I can put something up on a screen and say, look at this 136-acre park we're building, look at this school that's going to go in beside it, and this road that's going to be built in two years, it tells a better story. So in a lot of ways, I think that some of the things that happen here are because of the storytelling that goes on using these maps. We've used these maps in development meetings, I've used them in Jeff City, I've used them in Washington DC. Visualization, I think, is key to, to a lot of that, because you're talking about a future state, you're talking about future investment, and people don't, until they can see it, it's like, oh, I'm going to sit here and wait until I see that road and, and know that it's being built before I can invest, whereas I can show them that road that's going to be built in two years, and they can move faster and be, you know, we see development alongside of it versus waiting for a road, and then two years later, here comes the development beside it.
Did both of you all play SimCity?
I'm a big fan of that.
Do other cities use this?
It's, it's, I'd say this is used ubiquitously, but we, in the region, we are definitely at the top of that.
Excellent. Just to add to that, there, there's not another city around in our region that has the capability that we do. I've been, I've worked in several of the inhabitants, in the government entities here and has a, have a spouse that works in another one. They're not, they're not doing this, and they would benefit tremendously from it.
I'd like to add that that speaks to the progressive nature of the administration of Republic, and their adoption and investment game, so that's, that's why we've gotten to play and experiment and learn and grow with it where we have, and it speaks to that.
Mr. Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a council member, to me, this screen right here is just, it's invaluable. It has so much information on it. When people are asking questions about zoning, when I can go to something like this, and it's just like you were explaining, how fast you get those answers. I really appreciate having all of this in one spot, and a great job on putting this program together. It looks cool. I know that was said earlier, this looks cool, this looks presentable, has a lot of information, and I'm excited just to read through it and start reading and putting it all together. The zoning classifications, the difference between them has always been something difficult to explain. When I can send them somewhere and see it all on a list, that's perfect. As an electrician and a builder, it's 2023, and there are still some evenings where I have to drive to a job site and look for a piece of paper that's stuck on a wall somewhere to know whether or not I passed or failed an inspection to plan for the next day, and it's ridiculous. I hope people in this area are looking at this, because that's an issue in our area. I'm really proud of Republic doing this, because as an electrician, if I can go to a site and see a permit, I can see the condition of it, I can see what's happened, that's helping me as a business, that's helping me move. So I know the businesses are going to appreciate this, I know the builders, and I hope the citizens appreciate this too, and I'm excited to share this.
If you don't mind, I'll counterpoint with our process. So when we do that inspection, the inspector enters in the contact information's email. Upon submittal of the inspection to the system, it autoemails anybody that they've entered into that, that has requested that.
That's awesome. So I'll get a notification on my phone. Yeah.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I've got a question. I know we're a whole lot faster than we used to be, but from the time you sit down with a contractor until he can turn dirt to start building, how many days is that taking now?
That's a, that's a hard question, because that, there's a lot of things that go into that. We usually sit down to them before they've begun planning, because our goal is to like see them before they've invested any money.
Which is a good thing.
So I, I wouldn't want to make a guess on how long that takes. I don't know if, Andrew?
Yeah, I think on a residential permit, just a house, if it's a final-platted subdivision, what's the turnaround from, like, you apply for a
We'll have it done in five days, less than that.
Yeah.
Business.
The reason I ask, I read someplace that it's taken 39 days from the time they talk until they build, and I don't think that was right.
The time it takes here is on the developer or the designer. The time is not the city here. We have, that's one thing that we, you know, that's prioritized across our department, is to ensure that those review times are, you know, lean. And that's easy to do with these tools.
Yeah, let's just use an example. Let's take Whataburger, for example. If they come in with a full set of building plans, generally, they're going to get those plans back with comments in probably seven days or less, probably less than that on the second round. What people are experiencing, if you hear someone say it took 39 days, it's their engineer addressing the comments. And what we do is we try to meet with those engineers on the very front end of the development to answer as many questions as we can, so that that first submittal is as accurate as it can be. But generally, and not to poke fun at my engineering counterparts, but I always tell those developers that they'll be waiting on those guys and not us.
Hundred percent of the time.
Just to get paperwork done, and I knew it'd been cut down a lot.
Mr. Self?
So, I mean, it is awesome, it's fancy, it's definitely a competitive advantage. In your two minds, where do you improve? Where do you go from here? And it's not just inputting data, like, where, where do you see from here, how do you go to here?
I have a laundry list of to-do from staff. I'd like to see this in your book, so, I mean, I'm not a work animal control person that's created, built, and internal process that's similar to the point of controlling it. I work with the police department all the time. I need to do the same thing with the fire department. I just, so I have plenty to do, and it's really, there's no limit. It's time is the one constraint I, I feel that we have, so. Keeps me very excited, and it keeps me juggling priorities, but I think you'll continue to see this kind of stuff across all departments in the city.
As somewhere, I can, I could go here, I could, at 2023, I am capable to go through there. If a certain developer, have you had it? I mean, I would like to know at some point if somebody goes on and they're not able to click or get what they want, is there a way to have like tutorial or like a quick, you know?
That, that is part of our effort this year, is to create what is basically like a series of really short videos. So we've actually started on those already. That type of stuff will be available, because some of this stuff is complex. If you've never used it before, you know, and it's hard for me to see what's complex in some cases, because I'm so familiar with it. So we do get that information from people who are less familiar with it, and then we try and provide a tutorial. And that is something that we will roll out this year for sure, is a few of those.
Awesome.
Yeah, to that point, when they move a button, I, I have to call them, like, where's my button?
I've landed on a 2018 residential permit in the southwest corner, you know, it's like, you know, what do you, so I get it, so, yeah.
Are there any other questions from council? Guys, thank you very much. This was very informative and interesting. Thank you. All right, Mr. Nelson, what's next?
Next, we've got Garrett. He's going to give us an overview on all of the projects.
Now, we just had a fancy PowerPoint, and now he's going to hand up paper?
Well, it's the difference between
Because you guys last before I.
Awesome. It's the difference between GIS and engineers.
PowerPoint, Excel.
Yeah. So what he's going to go through is anything going on in the city that we've got our hands somewhat in, I would say, as a staffer, as a city, like, we're involved in it. It might be private development, it might be projects of our own, it might be a mixture of the two, but we want to give the council at least, and, and for the citizens, because we'll, we'll post this video, at least some level of information to see where all the things are happening. I'm not saying we'll answer all the questions right here, but at least you'll know what to ask more about.
Yep.
Yep.
So yeah, this, I've given this presentation twice now. The first time took four hours to go through, the second time, we got it down to about two, so we're going to do it in 14 minutes. Joking aside, I'm going to try to keep it high level. If you guys have questions along the way, please, please ask.
Can we, can we set a timer on that?
Okay, so overview of city projects, kind of a refresher for you guys. You guys have seen all these projects before, but it might have been a while since then. So the first one, Hankins Industrial, or Hankins Farms, it's an industrial subdivision, very similar to the Garten Business Park, 72 acres, 13 lots, there's potential for commercial on the frontage lots. The city is installing a water line out there, we're about 24% done with that. City contractors installing sewer, they are about done with that. All they have to do is hook up the lift station, and we're good to go with that. Private contractors installing the roadway, should be done in a few months, four to six months, hopefully. Iron Grain District, that is a mixed-use, commercial, multifamily, possible, their zone, their zoning with the PDD allows them to have a hotel. First commercial building should be there this spring. Eagle Stop is actually part of, it's not part of that development, but it is the same developer, they wanted it to be branded as part of the whole Iron Grain District, so that is open now. I actually went in there the other day, it's really cool.
It is really nice.
Yeah, I think all that is left at Iron Grain is for them to pave their parking lots and start getting some tenants in there, so that should be any day now. Stone Creek Falls, so that is a mixed-use, multifamily and commercial. They're working on the apartments right now, so we've issued at-risk permits for that for the first eight apartment buildings. So what at-risk means is not all the infrastructure is installed, so we haven't final-platted it, so we're kind of saying, hey, you can go ahead and get started on your buildings, but you need to finish your infrastructure before we'll give you a certificate of occupancy on any of these. So they said, okay, it's going to take us a while to build these apartments anyways, we're good with that. The only thing really remaining is for them to finish the intersection at MM, which they are almost done with. The signal there will actually remain off until those apartments are occupied. So, yeah, they're chugging along on that one. Highway MM, we've been through this one a little bit before, but just want to touch base on it. And part of the reason I wanted to give this PowerPoint to you guys in your hand is so you have all this information. That's the cost estimate for it. MoDOT is currently reviewing the preliminary plans. This is our cost share, so we actually have skin in the game on Part B of this, which is highlighted up there in your packet. Segment D, MoDOT is doing that themselves, so that is a completely MoDOT project, anticipated to be done by the end of 2025. That includes the railroad overpass in connection through Stone Creek down to US 60. So that'll be a five-lane section as well, anticipated end of 2025.
Hey, Garrett, I want to stop you right there for just a second.
I already passed it. You're, you're blowing the 14 minutes.
It's okay, it's okay, you can blame it on me. So I think council is likely to get some questions about what's going on at Stone some questions about what's going on at Stone Creek right now. Because if you've driven through there, just past our gateway sign, you can see signal poles going up. That's on this map, that is where red and blue meet. Temporary signal in the, in a sense that it's an actually fully built signal that will operate in the interim until they complete the blue section in 2025. So a lot of that's tied to the completion of those apartments and actually people being in them. So you'll see a signal there, but it won't be on until those apartments have people come in and go in, out of there. That's it.
All right. Carry on. Segments A and E of this, so the green and yellow, MoDOT has combined those into one job for the sake of consistency. I've just kept them that way. That is, that includes a bridge over James River Freeway, the expansion of that bridge, four or five lane accommodations. That is currently unfunded, but it is on the unfunded needs list. So hopefully that'll get funded in the next few years and be on the schedule for 28 through 31 or so.
Yeah. Did you say that we were on, that the city was on B? Did I hear that?
Yeah. So we're doing section B with a cost share with MoDOT, and then MoDOT is doing segment D themselves. And then the other segments are currently unfunded. So we did apply for a raise grant. We have not heard back on that, which would add segments A and E to that whole thing. So MoDOT would still do their part. We'd still do our cost share part, but now we can use those funds to match and get segment A and E constructed would be the idea, if we can get that grant. Segment C, currently unfunded. Wilson's Valley Development, which has kicked off, I think they kicked off a couple of weeks ago. They've done a ton on phase one for their project already. Will build a portion of this, not in phase one, in a future phase. But that will connect MM down to ZZ Highway. So the highway will have a full connection. It'll be five lane, ideally all through that stretch. Hines and Lynn, this one is going to happen this summer. Bid came in at 525,000. So total estimated construction cost is going to be about $800,000. Work will begin in May. We are going to close the intersection of Hines and Lynn. You'll still be able to get to Hind Street Pharmacy, Walgreens, anybody who has a driveway along there will still have access, but the intersection itself, you will not be able to drive through after Memorial Day. So May 30th, that Tuesday, it's going to be shut down. So we'll have detour routes out. We're going to have CMS boards out, changeable message signs on US 60, well before that gets underway. Just trying to alert people. And we'll be posting on our website as we move toward that project. That project will be done before August 11th and before school starts again. So. School queuing lane. So city is preparing the roadway for this. APAC is the contractor on it. Oh, I missed that. JD Wallace Construction is the contractor on this. I don't know if anybody cares, but I'm trying to get all this stuff. APAC is doing that this summer once we get the storage lane subgrade built. That'll add volume for 230 additional cars. So it's 230 cars that won't be stacking up on Main Street and down into 174. So that'll also be done this summer. And of course, our overlay program for the summer, the bid came in good. So we're going to go ahead and move forward with all of what was on our overlay plan that was presented to council. So we're going to be doing all of those roads you see up there. That's the same roads that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. And then these are just other transportation projects that are area projects or that don't have a fancy picture to go with them, that will be coming in the future. I've got some that are under five years I see happening and then others that may be a little bit longer than that. I-44 and MM signalized interchange, that one will be happening this fall into next spring, I believe. So yeah. Yeah.
Here you say JRF 16 from 60 to West Bypass. So where does that start?
So that would be US 60. So our US 60, so where it meets Sunshine, US 60, where that interchange is, where they're building that new come and go, where that fieldhouse is, where that trust place is, from there, back toward West Bypass on James River Freeway. The, the.
They from James River on 60 too.
It'll be James River itself being, yes. Yep.
Yeah, the, the one to note there is US 66 Lane. So that's our US 60, Sunshine into Republic. So that is from the new MM, which would be where those temporary signals are today, out to James River Freeway. That one's programmed for 2027.
Yep.
And just so the council is aware, I'm having meetings today about developments that'll happen in conjunction with that six-lane expansion in 2027. So it's, it's pretty exciting. We're planning that for in the future.
Yep. Schuler Creek Trail, moving forward on the grant proposals. Those are due June 1st, so we're working on those right now. Same splits as we talked about at council a couple of weeks ago. Same thing on the other MoDOT, or not MoDOT, MM Trail connections. Forward on those. Wastewater CIPs, CIP 3, it's, it's replacing lift station number four and force main improvements to take that drainage basin, which is about 200, I think it's close to 300 parcels total in that drainage basin, all go to this lift station currently and then drain down to Schuler Creek Lift Station. So what this realignment does is instead of pumping it twice, we will pump it once, it will gravity fall the rest of the way to the treatment plant. This one is underway right now. So if you see people working out on West Street, Elm, West Elm, that's what they're doing out there. So that one should be completed January of next year. CIP 6, this is 12,000 linear feet of gravity sewer upgrades. The upgrades differ between 18-inch and 36-inch pipe all the way down from Hind Street down to Schuler Creek Lift Station, which is located off of Miller. That one should get started later this summer. That's about a $6 million project. Should be completed next September. And then CIP 7, McElhaney Lift Station upgrade, and then 8,000 feet of forced main along, Farm Road 174 to accommodate growth, as well as the Brookline area. That one mobilization later this, this summer fall, completion next fall as well. And then the wastewater treatment plant blending, that one should get kicked off later this fall as well. This is, this is what we're calling phase one of our treatment plan upgrade. This is the one that's important to get us out of the administrative order to eliminate our second outfall, which is where stormwater bypasses our treatment process. So this will allow stormwater to be put back into the normal train right before filtration. And we'll still have to meet all our limits and nutrient requirements on that. The MBR upgrade is what we're still planning on doing right now. We don't have a cost estimate on this because we don't have an MBR vendor selected. We're still working with our consultants on that. Once they have a vendor selected, they actually have to design the facility around that particular MBR situation. So we're looking at June to have a target price on that. They're working on, they're working through final selection on that right now with notice to proceed March of 2024. And then I want to take a second to go through what an MBR is, because I'm guessing everyone's like, I don't know what that is.
Yeah, that was going to be my follow-up question.
Right. So MBR stands for membrane bioreactor.
Thank you.
So.
Hey Garrett, what's that mean?
Sure. So what a membrane bioreactor is, basically have a bioreactor area, which is like your activated sludge in a treatment plant. These things gobble up things like phosphorus, nitrogen, drop them out of the system. The membrane itself is what these little noodle things are. So what those are, they're literally noodles and their pores are so small that it won't let any of those, we call them bugs, get through the filter.
You're now using my word noodles and bugs. Got it. Keep going.
They're basically bacteria that gobble up all the stuff. But so anyway, they gobble up all the stuff and then they can't get through this membrane. So they stay where they should stay and then you have clean water that comes out is the basic idea of it. And then I've got kind of a scale there. So these pores are .1 microns. For reference, a red blood cell is eight microns. So they're extremely tiny. And we have a lot of these noodle things that we'll be putting in our plant.
Like, how big are the noodle things? Like, is this like this size of a room or like?
It'll be bigger than this room total. So the, the visual on the right that kind of shows the pumps and the whole thing, we'll have, I think we'll end up with three bays of those. And then each one of those is a, what they call a cassette, which is like 16 of the blue things that you see on the other side.
I see why you guys are doing this tonight while David's gone, because he would want to talk about this for hours.
That's part of why the meeting was four hours the first time.
Nice. It was. It was David's fault. Yeah. So one thing about the MBR, it's advanced technology. And one of the things we're trying to tackle here is changing water criterion that seem to change with administration. That's all I'll say about that. We're preparing to make this huge investment into our sewer system. This is the technology that will protect us for whatever criteria clean water comes out with in the future. We want to, I mean, obviously we're taking out a 20 to 30-year debt on this improvement. We want it to last through all of those changes. This, for, I mean, it produces what we would call reuse quality water. It can. Now, we're not going to let DNR know specifically that that's what we're capable of just yet, but we're prepared to do that. Reuse is not drinking water, but.
Can we save money by not doing all this? Like, are we spending money that we don't have to spend?
You, oh man, that's a complicated question. We're, we're addressing compliance, capacity, and criteria all at the same time. There are other ways. They are not any less expensive. And I say that in, within a range of three to $5 million, what I remember in the options. But at, in a 130 to 150 million dollars, if we don't spend the extra three to get the plant that will treat phosphorus or nitrogen or phosph, all those things, we'll wish that we did, because you'll have to go back and spend $100 million to go back the other way.
Okay.
Do council have any questions about that line of thought? All right. See, no, sorry. Go on.
Good. Schuler Creek Lift Station, just wanted to give a visual. So this is one of our Public Works guys. His name's Red. He's standing next to one of these pumps. There are four of those pumps that run. There's, very rarely are they ever off. There's always at least one running in high weather or high water, wet weather situations, there's usually two, sometimes three, sometimes all four kick on. So those pumps run constantly from Schuler Creek. I think we've said it before, that receives 70 to 80% of all the wastewater in the town goes to Schuler Creek and then gets pumped to the treatment plant. So just a quick update on that. We, we ordered the three new pumps. They should be here around September time. We've got three in service right, or we've got two in service right now in our backup pump hooked up to that lift station as well. So we're in good shape for now, waiting on those new pumps. And once we get those, we're going to start a rotation where there will always be four pumps in service instead of how we ended up last year, where we had one taken out for regular routine maintenance and then two more went down, which is kind of a scary situation. But we did handle it all. We didn't have any bypasses is the important thing. So. And that kind of leads into water, sewer repairs. So we have three to five of these major repairs a month. The major repair to me is a water line blows up or just breaks apart. This picture is from Hind Street. This happened March or February. And it was a 10-inch line that blew apart. Water was coming out of the ground, like people were losing pressure. So our crews go out there. This was, they always happen at night. They never happen during the day. They're always at night. So our crews dug down, put a, a saddle on it to bring the pipe back together, move on. So the reason this slide is here is because they happen anytime. So they're, this slide's just randomly in here. Typically, this situation was probably ground, when seasons change, ground temperature changes, causes flexures in pipes, causes the ground to move a little bit. Older pipes, a lot of times will, they'll just pull apart, or if there's a weak spot, it'll finally break over, over so many years. So but typically, the ones we have to respond to are larger water main breaks and forced main breaks. So we've got 147 miles of water mains in the ground. We have 126 miles of gravity sewer in the ground and 18 miles of forced main. So statistically, we're going to get some of those happening. We've had sewer in the ground since the 1950s at least. So there's stories from our wastewater guys who have been here a long time that some of the pipes are made of wood. I haven't seen any of those, but.
Is that recorded in the GIS?
That's verified at a later date.
I think we've replaced all those. But we do have a lot of vitrified clay pipe, which is what it sounds like. It's like a terracotta pot, but it's a pipe. So any ground shifting at all cracks it and you end up with a lot of iron eye. So.
One, one thing a lot of people ask, like every time a main breaks is, do we need to issue a boil order? So there's a standard guidance from MDNR, as long as we maintain a certain amount of pressure in the system. So during that break, until we can isolate it and shut it off, as long as we maintain a certain pressure, think about it, nothing bad can get in because we've got the pressure pushing all the water out. We don't issue a boil order. So, you know, we have at least two, two individuals on call all the time. They can usually respond to a break within a matter of probably 20 to 30 minutes. And something like this, this is probably four to six hours total by the time they fix it, put the gravel back in the hole and go on about their day. So generally, no, we don't have to issue a boil order. Luckily, knock on wood, we haven't, haven't been there yet, but that's not to say that we won't encounter that. Thank you.
Yep. Water towers. So we're getting ready to sandblast and repaint the ones that we haven't done yet. So why do we do that? To keep stuff from growing on the outside and to keep stuff from corroding on the inside. So we're utilizing the remainder of the ARPA funds that we set aside last year to do this. We're going to start with the tower, it's Tower Four, it's near Animal Control later this month. And then they'll move to the ground storage tank, which is located off of Cottonwood, after Tower Four, get that done. And then we'll move to the one at the middle school, which is the one that everybody sees. But it also has all the cell phone antennas on it. So we've been coordinating with the cell phone contractors to get their stuff taken off so that we can cover that, sandblast it and repaint it this fall. That'll be the plan. And then we'll have shiny new towers going into '24. Builds facility. So this is complete. We moved in April 10th. So much better than the old facility we had. I can't thank council and administration enough for allowing us the opportunity to build this. I, I got to brag on our crews too. We saved $1 million plus on this. A million dollars is conservative. We installed the sewer, we installed the water main, we installed most of the stormwater, the major stormwater components of this. We did all of the grading. They moved 33,000 cubic yards of materials off that site for $0 extra. I mean, we're paying the guys to work, but $0 to haul that stuff off. We were able to get contractors who just needed filled dirt to come in. We loaded them up, got it all out of there. We prepared the pad for the asphalt and the wrap parking lot in the back. Were able to stay on schedule, get everything done and move in there, like I said, April 10th. So there's, there's more to be done. Our parking lot is currently recycled asphalt pavement, which is essentially gravel. It's just a little stronger than gravel because it's still got some of the oil in it from the asphalt. So that is something we're going to look at, solutions to upgrade in the future, as well as we want some water and airlines run through the shop building. So it's easier to fill our trucks, easier to, if you need an air compressor hose somewhere in the shop and it's way over there, it's easier just to pull it down from the ceiling. So. And the big thing is a, is a material storage building. So what that would allow us to do is store quantities of pipe, like 10, 12-inch pipe in, it comes in 20-foot sticks is what it's, what we refer to it as. So a building that we can have a good quantity of those on hand, that's not something you can just leave out in the open. It does deteriorate in sunlight. So the UV rays will cause the pipe to deteriorate and then it's easier to crack and break underground. So we're going to be looking at how to get that done, hopefully either late this year or next year. But thank you again for allowing us to do that. I, yeah, that's all I can say about that.
We do have a public building dedication. Be extending advice to the council on YouTube. Even though you don't like the crooked sign.
It's crooked. I'm going to fix it. Don't worry about it. No one's going to notice but me. Just one night, it'll be shifted.
There's a few more things. We, we did a staff, family kind of open house just on the move-in, but once we get everything. but once we get everything buttoned up, we'll invite the council and everybody out to see that building. It's certainly something to be proud of.
Absolutely. So, I get to talk about park stuff tonight, which is exciting because their stuff is actually.
Jared, are you okay with this?
Actually, I am.
Okay.
So, yeah, the Republican Quarter expansion, mobilization this week, earthwork beginning next week, substantial completion before pool season of next year. So, that's going to be amazing once that gets up and running. Yeah, I don't know what else to say about that one.
You're moving the sidewalks, the walk path. That went out on Facebook today, I saw. So, that'll be cut up and we're going from lucky 13 to lucky 10?
That's correct. Yeah. So, if you invite our day, the fence, the project fencing is up, it looks enormous. It actually is enormous. It's a little bit bigger than the fence. The fence makes it look a little bit bigger than it is, but the project itself takes up a lot of territory. So, it was an exciting day to see those fences up. But, to your point, Mary, yes, we made alterations to lucky 13, now lucky 10, and also we moved the trail. So, well, I'm sorry to close the trail. We're going to move the trail along.
Right. JR Martin, working on final design for that. New goal is to be open in fall of '24. Builds is going to assist where we can on doing some of the demo work, some of the subgrade preparation, similar to what we did for our building as we can to help out, hopefully keep costs down out there as well. And then, February '24 looks like when they'll be bidding that project. And then, the Regional Athletic Complex, final design work will be done hopefully spring of '24, target goal, fall of '25, spring of '26 for Phase 1. Continuing to seek additional funding for that. And then, Joshua Morris Park, we're still moving forward on that. There was an issue with it. That's behind the Pentecostal Church on Missouri 174, that area back there. Trying to, the goal is to alleviate some flooding of the road on Logan Street. And then, we're going to utilize that property as a park in the future. So, potentially Dog Park is what I've heard from, yeah. So, still moving forward on that project. So, more to come on that in the future. Just some of the residential subdivisions that are moving forward right now. Like Chris said earlier, like it's a lot of permits out right now for this time of the year. So, still tracking along on those. And then, just some honorable mentions. I wanted to throw this up there. Kansas sidewalks. When I first gave this presentation, I said they'd be complete this spring. They are completed. So, what that was, was a short gap between Birch Point subdivision. They built sidewalks. We tied those into Savannah Heights and added across the street pedestrian ramps for the subdivisions across the street as well. So, just making a good connection there with not a lot of additional work. And then, this is actually Andrew's unfunded needs list. I just stole it, made it look prettier. So, thank you. Those are all the things we don't have money for, but we want to do. So, and then Convoy of Hope, city installed the water line out there, nearing completion on their global headquarters. And then, they have much more to come on that. And that's all I know about it. So, I've just seen kind of an idea of what they want to do out there and it's pretty crazy. So.
Yeah. I think I'll go into that just a little bit. And I don't know that it's necessarily a secret more than it is they're still planning. But there are, I'll just give you names of components. So, there's dorms. There is a welcome center. There's long-term housing. There's donor housing. There's an area of probably, I would call it 40 acres, that's going to be training grounds for teaching people how to farm, how to grow food and relate that to the countries in which they're, where they're from to do that. And it's crazy. Some of that stuff has features that you'll be able to see it from space. So, I can't understate what that means. That is a global entity that's located here in Republic. And long-term, I don't know if we completely realize the impact that that'll have for our community, but it's going to be big.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, just some other stuff that's in the works. This site is along MM. This is just a conceptual. It's not anything that's actually happening. This may look very differently, but some developers looking at doing something along the east side of MM up there. It's got good access to water, sewer. And we've been in talks to start a potential Phase 1 of this as soon as this year. And that'll come before council, before anything else goes forward on that. And then, so this is the, I call it the grail because nobody else has named it. It's between US 60, James River Freeway and the railroad tracks. It makes like a nice little cup there. So, that's got the Regional Parks Complex. It's got Stone Creek Falls mixed development. It's got the Republic Schools Development. It's got a future development and the US 60 frontage all along it as well as the MM realignment, railroad overpass. So, this is kind of a rendering that kind of shows all of those things kind of together. And I just thought it was really cool to finally see that coming up. And I'm going to brag on Chris again. Several years ago, when I first started, Chris put together a development intensity map, which basically showed like properties or areas that are ripe for development based on transportation, utilities in the area, size of parcel, stuff like that. And this was glowing bright green in that area. So, to finally see that, like, yes, that is, that was true. That is where this was going is really cool. And then, this is in your admin packet as well. I just wanted to kind of go over this for a minute. What this is, is a snapshot of where we are on our utility sales to date in the year. So, this is through our April billing cycle. So, there's two cycles a month or four months into the year. So, we're eight billing cycles in. You can see on here our revenue year-to-date versus our budgeted and then show our year-over-year percentage increase. Now, a little caveat to that is the rate increases did not go into effect, they went into effect January 1st. But because of the way we bill and the way we read, that's about two months behind. So, those increases don't show up in this data until March. So, we've only had four billing cycles of eight that are on the new billing schedule. So, just wanted to get this in front of you guys. It's in your admin packet. If you have anything else you would like to know about or if there's better information you would like to request, I have a huge spreadsheet with all this stuff on it. I just tried to boil it down to what I thought was most relevant to you all. So.
We're aware. We're aware.
You knew which month that increase went into effect, is what you're saying?
And then, working on some stormwater specification, stormwater and construction specification updates, hopefully taking that in June to planning and zoning and then it'll follow to council shortly after. And just some other programs we run. MS4, so we have a separate stormwater system in the City of Republic, which basically means some older cities like New York City, they're trying to get away from it. Kansas City's trying to get away from it. But they used to just put all the stormwater and sanitary sewer in one pipe. But when that gets to the treatment plant, you have way more water than your treatment plant can handle. So, you have to then try to figure out how to sort it out again. The City of Republic has separate, so we have stormwater sewers and then we have sanitary sewers. So, stormwater sewers just drain to a drainage basin and then they go right into the creek. So, we are responsible for enforcing our rules and DNR's rules and the EPA's rules for stormwater in the City of Republic. So, we administer that program. We also administer FOGs, ADA Transition Plan and INI Reduction Plan. And that's it. So, we're a little past 14 minutes, but yeah.
That's pretty good.
Questions from council?
Seeing none?
Thank you, sir.
You.
All right. Pop quiz. Karen, I've heard you guys talk all night, but you've been suspiciously quiet. Do you have any final thoughts, any additions that you think maybe would help educate us a little further?
That is extremely strategic. My team has done a just really fantastic job putting together a very brief snapshot of some of the very high-level, important things that we do, that we think are pertinent, the decisions that you make for our community every day. So, we hope that's been informative. If you need additional information, of course, we love to talk about these things. We'd love to talk about Permantron, all of the statistics. Please come and talk to us. We'd also love to show off our building and give you a grand tour. But most of all, I just want to express our sincere gratitude to the support of our department by the mayor and city council for all of the, that allows us to do all of the things that we can do to work with our community and make it a fantastic place to live and work. So, we really do appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Questions from council on anything we've heard tonight? Mr. Franklin?
I would just like to say thanks for putting all this together. That is a lot of great information. So, I appreciate everyone's hard work and the great program and the great presentation that everyone gave tonight. So, blanket thank you to everyone. Great information and great work.
This is all being recorded, correct? Chris, we're going to put it out on our YouTube channel for any citizens that are interested. Excellent. Okay. Mr. Nelson?
I don't have anything. Just thank you. I'm tremendously proud of everybody. There's so many people here smarter than I am that we don't get to showcase that a lot. So, to have the opportunity to take a regular meeting time, get you all still to come and listen to that is worthwhile to us. We had a huddle. It's been a month, maybe two months, and Chief Sales and Major Burks got to present and they had more questions than I've ever had in any presentation from our staff that we've ever done. That was a great presentation. So, we'll be getting them in front of you as well to share some information. So, we'll go through the departments. Again, that's back to the effort to communicate, get the information out so that you have that toolkit to answer the questions as you get them. But we'll continue to do that and try to make it convenient and invite it off in pieces that get us out of here timely.
Excellent. That's it. Well, I do not want to take up any more of your time. I appreciate all the effort that you've put into this. I'm going to echo what everybody else has said. This is extremely useful and something that we need to be pushing out to our community to make sure they know that you're working hard for them. So, with that, meeting adjourned.